Good evening and welcome to this meeting, this, excuse me, let me adjust the volume here. Welcome to this meeting of a special city council meeting for the City of Kennedy. My name is Joe Baker, I'm the mayor of Kennedy, and I'm calling this meeting to order at this time. I will now call roll and establish that a quorum is present for this meeting. Councilmember Briales?
Present.
Councilmember Winn?
Here.
Councilmember Sines?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Douglas?
Here.
All are present, we have a quorum this evening. Now if you would all please rise and join us in prayer, and Leslie, if you'll lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time and this day. We ask that you would watch over us and if you would send some rain. Help us to get through our meeting and accomplish the task before us to, for the betterment of your community, in your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda, the next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments this evening? Mr. Lynn, has anybody signed up?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time? If not, then we will move on to item number six. This is underheading entitled Ordinance Resolution Other Action Items. This section shall provide for all other official discussion and action items provided for consideration by the council. Item number six, presentation of the City of Kennedy's 2020 Annual Financial Report and Update on the City of Kennedy Volunteer Fire Department Forensic Audit. Presenter, auditor Donald L. Allman, CPA. Mr. Allman, if you could come forward. That's no problem, yes, sir.
First off, I would just like to thank the mayor and city council members for choosing my firm to do the audit for the City of Kennedy, greatly appreciate the business. I enjoyed coming to Kennedy, I actually have a cousin that lives here, so it was good to see her and get a little business done too, so thanks for that. Also need to thank all the staff here, everyone we worked with was wonderful. We've worked with Mr. Lynn at some past cities, but I need to just give special, just some special, or just talk about how great Judy Murphy is. I say I do about 30 to 35 small city audits, and when I came out here, of course, the first time is always a little tough, because you don't know what you're going to see, and I mean there's copies, there's pretty much everything we need, and then I say lead schedules. I'll try not to be too nerdy with y'all, but lead schedules are an auditor thing. So I was like, oh my gosh, where did this come from? Judy used to be an auditor, Judy worked at a CPA firm as an auditor, so she was incredible. She's by far the best, you know, best accountant we've worked with in 20 something years in 30 cities of doing that, so just wanted to give her, you know, an extra credit, because she really, you know, made y'all's audit go a lot quicker and a lot smoother by doing such a good job getting everything to us. Now without further ado, I'll crunch some numbers for you. If you'll turn to page three in your report, well in the middle of the page there talks about financial highlights, and y'all definitely have some. The assets of the City of Kennedy Texas exceeded its liabilities at the close of the most recent fiscal year by $56,175,639. That is net position. Of this amount, $9,179,638, which is unrestricted net position, may be used to meet the government's ongoing obligations to citizens and creditors. What does this mean in English? Net position is basically net worth. So the City of Kennedy, and this is your general fund and your proprietary fund, water and sewer fund put together, and out of the 30, 35 cities I do, y'all have the highest net worth of any city that I work with, $56 million. So obviously, the City of Kennedy's management and governance has done a great job managing your finances for several, several years. That's just an outstanding position to be in to have that much net worth built up. By your second bullet point, the government's total net position increased by $5,277,395. This increase, excuse me, is attributable to your oil and gas lease income and royalties of $2,920,194, the alarm taxes of $635,829, sales taxes of $1,893,594, and operating income in the utility fund of $2,966,001, and careful budget management. Again, $5 million net income for the year is a pretty good result there as well. As of the close of the current fiscal year, City of Kennedy Texas governmental funds reported combined ending fund balance of $17,795,804. Approximately 30% of this amount, $5,394,120, is available for spending at the government's discretion as unassigned fund balance. Last year was about $25 million, so y'all did have about a $7 million decrease, why the big decrease? Sports complex, so y'all put about $8 million in the governmental funds. You don't depreciate items, you expense expenses, so all of that $8 million that was put in is expensed here where it's capitalized and depreciated in the government-wide financials. Last bullet point there, the City of Kennedy Texas added over $8 million in construction in progress in the general fund with the sports complex, and added $4 million in land and over $5 million in water and sewer distribution capital assets in the proprietary fund. 9320 was a big year in adding capital assets to the City of Kennedy. And I promise, we will not go through all any pages. See, if you ever have trouble falling asleep, yeah, read that, especially read the pension stuff, because that's just... Page seven, that's the City of Kennedy net position, this is your balance sheet. So this is the balance sheet for the City of Kennedy, and I'll go very quickly through these, your governmental activities, this is your general fund, your business type activities is water sewer. We do have 2020 and 2019 side by side on current and other assets, so that's going to be checking, savings, CDs, taxable, basically just any and all bank accounts for the general fund, also things like property tax receivable and sales tax receivable. 2020, y'all have $7,56,815, up from the $6,917 in the year before, so you're up about 140,000 in your current assets, that's good. Restricted assets, this is all cash, so this, the restricted assets amounts are just all cash accounts that y'all have, just restricted for specific purposes. $11,160,000 down from the $18,670. So where did some of that money go? Here it is, capital assets, your capital assets, $18,723,239. Big $8 million increase from the $10,784,000 you had in the prior year, so you moved a lot of your restricted construction funds into construction during 2020. So actually, y'all added $8 million in construction depreciation in the general fund, about $495,000. So your total assets in the general fund now are $36,940,597, up from the $36,372 in the prior year, so we're up about $570,000 there. Total deferred outflows of resources, that's a TMRS pension number, doesn't really have much to do with the City of Kennedy, $95,000 down from $276. Your long-term liabilities, that's going to be your bonds payable and loans payable, $7,826,000 down from the $8,996, so you decreased your long-term debt by over $1 million. Other liabilities is going to be accounts payable and also at the current portion of your long-term debt, $653,000. I have no idea why they had a negative $53,000 last year, that is wrong. Well, we got it right this time, $653,000 is your other liabilities. Total liabilities were $8,479,506, decrease of about $500,000 from the $8,943 in the prior year. Deferred inflows of resources, again, TMRS pension number, $216,000 up from $54. Your investment in capital assets, net of debt, that's kind of like the blueprint value of all the capital assets y'all have, $10,689,000, big increase in the $9,877 reflective of all the capital asset additions y'all made last year. Restricted, again, this is cash, it's restricted either for construction or for debt service payments, $12,327,000 up from the $12,52,000 in the prior year. Your unrestricted, so that's free and clear, has no restrictions or obligations, $5,424,000 up from the $5,720. So your total net position in the general fund, $28,447,71, up from the $27,650,000 in the prior year. Now we'll go to business type activities, your water sewer fund, current and other assets, same thing there, that's basically just all your bank accounts in the water sewer fund, also customer account receivable, $4,761,852, that is down from the $7,330,000 in the prior year, so if you have about a $2.6 million decrease there. Your restricted assets, again, that's cash, that's just cash that is restricted for specific purposes, in this case, it's debt service, $1,219,879, up from the $856,000 in the prior year. Capital assets, big increase again here, $30,926,000 up from the $20,870. As I mentioned before, you added $4.3 million in land acquisitions in the proprietary fund, and $5.7 million was added to the water and sewer distribution system. So total assets in water sewer, excuse me, $36,907,000 up from the $29,000, so over a $7 million increase in your total assets for the water sewer fund. Deferred outflows, again, TMRS pension number, $291,000 down from $331. Your long-term liabilities, $7,822,000 up from the $5,474, so you had about a $2.4 million increase what happened there. You had to go along with $3.4 million last year, and then you, so you paid down your other debt by about a million and added a new, a new note payable for $3.4 million. Restricted assets, $9,444 versus $91,000, very small change there. Other liabilities, again, this is going to be your accounts payable and the current portion of your loans, $1,434,000 up from the $547 in the prior year. So total liabilities were $9,347,000 up from the $6,113. Total deferred inflows, again, pension number, $117,000 up from $30, your net worth in the water sewer fund, and thus in capital assets, again, big increase here, $22,759,000 up from $16,442, due to those additions in infrastructure that y'all made. Your restricted, that's for debt service and government audits, we have to show that y'all have money set aside to make all of your loan principal and interest payments, $1,219,879, that $2,500 last year was wrong. So your unrestricted net position, $3,755,670, down from the $6,802,000, mainly just moved money from unrestricted to your investment in capital assets. So total water sewer net worth, $27,734,000 up from the $23,247. Page eight, and this will be the last page we'll go over for your financial numbers. This is the changes in net position or audit for profit and loss or income statement. So this is the income statement for the City of Kennedy. Again, governmental activities is your general fund, business type activities is water sewer. In the general fund, your charges for services, $905,000, a big decrease from the $1,988,000 in the year before. You did have grant money of $152,000 compared to $328 last year. Your maintenance and operations, that's your add, the alarm taxes, about the same, $635,000 slight decrease from the $640. Sales taxes were up, which is good indication of economic progress, $100,000 increase in your sales tax revenue from $1,893,000 up from $1,793. Franchise taxes about the same, $175,000 slight increase from the $170. Your occupancy taxes, it's mostly hotel motel, $602,000 down from $1,002, big decrease there, of course, we know what happened, COVID, nobody was going to hotels last year. Your licenses and permits, $39,000, down from $82, interest income, $130,000, down from $202. Your oil and gas lease income and royalties, big increase though, $2,920,000 up from $2,225. Misland use income, $375,000 up from $275. So your total revenue in the general fund was $7,830,862, was down about $500,000 from the $8,381,267 in the prior year, with last year being the big COVID year, though I think that's still pretty, pretty good results there. Your expenses, general administration funds in the general fund, $1,800,000, so a nice $300,000 decrease from the $2,124 in the prior year. Public safety, that's fire and police and EMS, most of that, of course, being police, $1,832,899 up from $1,782. Public works, it's just some depreciation, $1774 both years. Your public transportation expenses, $1,096,000 up from $711, so pretty good increase there, about $385,000. Culture and recreation, that's parks and library, $579,000 up from $440. Your interest expense was up quite a bit, y'all had new loans that came in last year, $207,000 up from $30. So total expenses were $5,519,000, up about $420,000 from the $5,090,000 the year before. Your increase in net position before transfer, so this is kind of truly how the general fund did, $2,311,394, down from $3,291, but still just, wow, outstanding. I mean, out of most of the cities I do, your general fund usually breaks even or loses money. The exceptions are cities with phenomenal growth, because I don't know if y'all know about Dripping Springs, the city I do near Austin, gosh, they're the only city I do that has more revenue than you, because they have construction and development fees of like $8 million. Because, you know, they, I always tell people now, they've made it because they have their own Chick-fil-A. When you have your own Chick-fil-A, you're not, you're not a little town anymore, so, yeah, Dripping Springs has its own Chick-fil-A. Anyway, y'all, like I'm saying, I think what sets y'all for it is your oil and gas royalties, you want to add $2, $3 million to your general fund, that's just a great position to be in. Now let's move over to your water sewer, you've got some big numbers there, especially not to provide electricity. Water and sewer revenues were $8,274,000, down slightly from the $8,530, about $4,000 both years for interest, the total revenue in water sewer was $8,278,000, down slightly from the $8,534, so you had about a $260,000 decrease there. Interest in the water sewer fund was $198,000, they didn't separate them last year. Your utility expenses, $5,113,000, up, or down, I'm sorry, down slightly from the $5,350, so your increase in net position is $2,966,000, down a little bit from the $3,184. Still, a $3 million net income in the proprietary fund is a real good year. So I will stop there with the financial part, any comments or questions?
Any questions from the council for Mr. Allman? I have two, Mr. Allman, on page 34. Just a moment, let's get there. Under 3A budgetary information, it says the mayor has been authorized by the council to prepare the budget, I think that may be incorrect. We are a type A municipality that's adopted the city manager plan, and also by ordinance, I believe. Mr. Lynn, you are the budget officer for the city, is that correct?
That is correct.
So I don't know if that needs to be corrected in the report, or, or Mr. Lynn, would you, what would you recommend in regard to this?
Well, Mr. Allman's probably just looking at the government code, typically under a type A general law municipality, under title 22 of the government code, a strong mayor form of government, the mayor's been designated as the budget officer, so for practical purposes, probably why he just put that in there like that.
Actually, I'm sorry if I may, it was just copied from the prior one, that's exactly how, you know...
Mr. Byer, who did our audits for years like that.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Is there anything needed?
It's a non-material.
Okay, if it's non-material, then there's no action required, then, okay.
And I'm saying, just one other thing while we're on that, so we kind of, you know, for comparison purposes, used their format as much as we could going forward, so hopefully we can get to work with y'all again. We will use our format for both years, and we have two years to compare, and our report will be about 20 pages, Wes.
Okay.
It won't be quite as heavy. They definitely have a bunch of pension, you do have to have a bunch of the pension stuff, but there's probably a good 10 pages with some of their schedules, I don't really know.
It took a while to read, I'll give you that.
Yes, sir, so, yeah, actually, if we get to come back, we will...
That was me three times.
Yeah, we'll condense it for you and get it a little cleaner.
That'd be appreciated. I just have one more question. Page 35, in regard to credit risk. Are we insured enough in this regard?
Technically, no. But, you know, do I think it's a material or significant problem? No. You know, if, you know, were the banks to fail, y'all would be at risk there in $16 million. I don't think this is, you know, 1929, I don't think banks are going to fail anytime soon, so.
So you wouldn't recommend doing anything in that?
I would probably recommend just look into upping, you know, your collateral, see how much it would cost to up the collateralization amounts with your bank. Most of the cities I do work with do have full collateralization, I know a few of them even just spread the, you know, because it's FDIC dividend, $250,000, and, you know, they'll use eight or 10 different bank accounts, you know, banks, so then they have $250,000 at each of them, but of course, you know, that's usually not very efficient either. So most of the cities I work with that are, you know, fortunate enough to have big, big cash amounts do have, you know, collateralization, usually up to their mouths. I would definitely recommend looking into it, just seeing how much it would cost, and then, you know, whether y'all think it's worth adding that to it, just because I won't say, and, I won't say, well, I mean, in the event of, you know, a catastrophic failure, then, then, you know, at least you are covered, but, you know, do I think that's likely? No, definitely not.
Okay. Well, those are the only questions I have, are there any further questions for Mr. Allman?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Allman, would you recommend that we go to do this, that we seek letters of credit?
Whatever's easier and, you know, better for y'all. Yeah, either way's fine, so I would definitely just, you know, kind of ask it and see how much it would cost to increase your collateralization.
I don't have a question, but for the general public out there, because I know this is, you know, basically, we are in good shape.
Oh, yes, yes, very, very good shape, yeah. Well, as I said, your actual cash positions are, if you don't look at page, like I said, if you ever have trouble falling asleep, read this whole thing. But, yeah, if you want a little more detail, you can look on page 13. This just gives a little more breakdown on your balance sheets of, your cash, your cash in the general fund, $6,128, cash in our sewer, $7,90, so your total cash is $9,919. See, that doesn't include your restricted cash below, which is $10 million, and, or $12 million there, so, I mean, y'all have over 20, you know, well over $20 million in cash set aside. They recommend, you know, kind of a rule of thumb is to have three months worth. Your expenses were, that's better shown on page eight, so, yeah, your expenses for the year were $10 million, so, you know, yeah, y'all easily have that much, you know, so, yeah, three months of that would be, you know, maybe about $2 million. So, yeah, y'all have way more, per se, than what's recommended or needed, so, yeah, no, y'all, y'all are financially, if not the strongest, one of the strongest.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely been doing a great job for a long time.
Any other questions? If not, Mr. Allman, thank you for coming here tonight and giving this presentation, really helps to understand everything a little better when you hear it spoken the way you did, so we really appreciate that. And Judy, thank you for all your assistance as well, much appreciated. If there's no further discussion or questions, I would entertain a motion.
Oh, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need to move on?
Actually, they probably should do that, and we'll do the, her presentation after.
Okay.
So it's best to act on this audit?
Yeah.
Okay, if there's a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept this audit as it's presented.
Second act, 2020.
2020, audit.
Go ahead, second act.
You have a motion and second? Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll?
Councilor Briales?
Yes.
Councilor Winn? Yes. Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
And now we'll move on to the Kennedy Volunteer Fire Department Forensic Audit. Mr. Allman?
Yes, sir, thank you. Unfortunately, I mean, we're maybe a quarter or a third of the way through, I apologize for that, unfortunately, we're, we still have six 9320 cities still to do, so, so usually we're, that keeps us super busy through June, and we're still, still kind of in that boat right now. When we came out here, we were able to get through 10 months of just going through the bank statements, so we looked at January 2018 through October 2018, and my honest assessment right now would be, I don't know, right now, see, what we've basically seen is, you know, there's definitely not very good documentation on deposits, you know, what they're for, where they're coming from, so some of the things we have noticed is like, seems like, you know, when there's a fundraiser, it's usually, this stuff is paid for before, and then the deposits from that are maybe, you know, a week or a month or two months after. And, you know, there's just not really an accounting of, you know, what was actually taken in, you know, and saying, just, you know, going through all of this, I mean, yeah, I have, you know, no description, no receipt, no, no description, no receipt, most of the expenses, you know, we don't have, you know, a receipt for it, basically just coming from the bank statement, you know, where it's, it's, well, for example, here, okay, there's $110 to Bar's Restaurant. We don't have a receipt, you know, we don't have any documentation, what exactly was that for, you know, that sort of thing. So, see, we, you know, we definitely, we'll come back and go through the rest of the months that we need to do, and we'll ask questions and, you know, do more investigation. Like I said, right now, you know, we're just kind of like, there definitely needs to be more, kind of more documentation, you know, just as far as what money's collected for than what it's spent for, that sort of thing, so, just right now, you know, we would say, basically, all we can see now is the money coming in and out on the bank statement, but we don't really have much explanation as to what it was for, or where it came from, things of that nature. So that's kind of where we're at right now, and of course, any comments, questions, or things y'all specifically want us to look at, please let me know, and we will definitely go forward with that. And, see, we have done, oh, I guess about 12 to 15 forensic examinations in my career, so we do have a little bit of experience with it, and I work with tons of fire departments, so we have, we do about 10 ESD, or, yeah, ESD fire department audits, so. There are some, you know, some expenses that are, you know, definitely supplies and training, stuff like that, but then there seems like there's a meal once a month, so, you know, I don't know if that's really kind of what the purpose of the, you know, if the, whether that's okay or not, I just don't really know. That's kind of where we're at right now.
Are we just auditing 2018?
2018, 19, and 20.
Okay.
Yeah, and like I said, we got through 10 months of 18, so, yeah, we still have all of 19 and 20 to go through, and say, again, I apologize for that, we will be back in May to get a little further, like I said, I've just got six cities beating me up right now, so, you know, because actually, I'll be at five different cities the first week of May. So we'll get a report on it and make you say, you're saying? Yes, sir. Okay.
Probably not completed, but at least there's...
Possibly not, yeah, yeah, we'll just have to, now, and also, Mandy?
Mandy?
Mandy, I'm saying she broke her ankle or something, and she was going to be kind of our main contact person on that, and she wasn't here. She was out on medical leave when we were here, so when she comes back, we'll definitely need to get with her and go over things a little better.
I have a question on that, and you probably don't know the answer to that.
Probably not.
Who's responsible for that checkbook right now?
The one at...
The fire department?
Orange County?
The fire department, yeah.
The checkbook, do they have separate from what we have?
Right.
From what I understand, the treasurer is responsible for that checkbook.
Okay, which is who?
I wouldn't know, since they changed officers, change.
Mary. Mary?
Mary.
Okay. So would she, wouldn't she need to kind of be around to answer some questions for you also?
Sure. Like I said, we wanted to just get through kind of the accounting aspect first, and then we start asking questions, so like I said, we got through 10 months, we still have 20, you know, 26 months to go.
Okay.
So, yeah, once we get through that, then we'll set, set up a time to come back and actually do interviews and talk to people.
Okay.
Councilor Winn, and I believe Austin was the prior treasurer.
You answered my question without having to ask you.
Any other questions in regards to the fire department audit?
I got a question. When you get all the information you got for this audit that we're, is your performance at the moment, what, does this affect the credit rating for the City of Kennedy, or is something totally separate?
Totally separate.
Totally separate, okay. What is the credit rating for the city?
That would come from your bond people. Yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah, I don't think we have any information on that. Yeah, so, yeah, so yeah, I don't think we have any information on that right now, but I would think y'all would have to be an exception.
Okay.
There you go, but yeah, I would be amazed if y'all were anything but a boss.
Any other questions? Mr. Lynn, I don't believe any actions required on this particular, just for informational purposes.
Just kind of an update.
Is there anything else, Mr. Allman?
Sir?
If not, thank you for coming this evening, we really appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Next item on the agenda is item number eight, consideration and possible action in regard to ordinance 21-07, an ordinance amending the adopted budget of the city of Kennedy, Texas, for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021, for the purpose of funding line items relating to the daily operations of the municipality. Presenter, City Manager Lynn. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, ma'am. State Council?
Ma'am?
Presidents, uh, as I've been saying all along, each month, when we get to this particular point in time, we're going to do our mid-year budget adjustments. Essentially, what we're doing here tonight is we're making those mid-year budget adjustments. When we write a budget, we write a budget with the best forward-looking position that we have, based upon what we think we're going to spend in certain line items on our budget. Uh, we need to come back every half year and take a look at that and see where we are, and match that up with where, what our percentage is. So like last month, when I presented the financials, we were supposed to be at 50% used of our budget. A lot of items were under, a lot of items were over, and depending upon whether they were revenues or expenses, it was good or bad for the city. Uh, at the end of the day, the 30,000-foot view is, do the revenues and the expenses at least zero out at the end of the day? And that's important, but when you're trying to run a municipality or any business, we need to make sure that our line items are as close in line as possible as we can. I gave you a great example, one of the items that's in this, uh, adjustment is, um, utilities out of the park, municipal streets department. We had a typographical error when we did the budget. Instead of $50,000 funding that account, we funded it with $5,000, which is way, way lower than we need to. So that's one of the adjustments we're making. We're bringing that back up to speed and allocating money from an account that's not being used or accounts that is going to have a complete surplus and moving it over, so the, the funds are just not sitting there. Okay? Uh, the, another thing that we're doing here is, as we've talked about, getting the street sweeper. Uh, we've had to, we have to move the $200,000 over to do that for the street sweepers as well, so, uh, and there's just a lot of little things here, and some of them are very small, a hundred dollars, couple hundred bucks, and some of them, like a street sweeper very large, $200,000. At the end of the day, we're moving just a little, just under $700,000 between the two, between the accounts, uh, from where we need to increase and where we're taking from. But the spreadsheet that I have attached to the ordinance does balance out, uh, as to what we're doing, so, and that's really, guys, all we're doing is just doing this tonight. Okay? Questions?
Wait, the, the date was just...
The date on the ordinance is correct. I made a typo on the agenda and had it corrected.
Okay.
For some reason, I thought today was 2022.
Okay.
So, yeah. All right, very good, thank you.
Ms. Cad, thank you for joining us this evening. Um, I had a question for you regarding this item. Would it be necessary to include the purpose of the budget amendment in the agenda item itself, or, or because the ordinance is referenced, is that enough information?
Usually, because the ordinance is referenced, that should be enough information, and it should, you know, uh, be apparent that the ordinance is available for viewing, uh, city hall or to the public. So usually, that should be enough for the agenda.
Okay. Um, any questions from the council for Mr. Lynn regarding your agenda item number eight? Any further discussion on this agenda item?
Do we ever have a motion on that agenda?
No motion yet. Do we need a motion to discuss, Mr. Lynn?
To discuss?
Yes.
Yeah, we need to make a motion and a second and discussion.
Okay, entertain a motion to discuss this item at this time?
Make a motion to discuss item already.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll?
Council Brianis?
Yes.
Council Wen?
Yes.
Council Sines?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion carries. Any discussion on this item? There are no questions, or, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Lynn, for that item that you brought up just a while ago, have you looked at different companies already, or you, uh, for the sweeper, or...
We did, we checked out Elgin, which is what we currently have, and we checked out Timco. Now, Timco is by far the best, uh, out on the market. Uh, the Elgin people were resistant to working with us, even though we have a sweeper, it's more of a parking lot sweeper than we purchased from them. Uh, Timco did give us an excellent discount, even though we're moving $200,000, that accounts for, um, some unforeseen items, uh, we're, we're going to come in right around $187 on that Timco sweeper, and it's not going to require CDL, so...
How many, ma'am, uh, just stay, let's understand on this, the, who's going to be responsible for training the guys to use this machine?
That would be our director of sweep, uh, streets and parks, uh, Jervan Anderson.
They usually come down whenever, whenever we would rent, when I was director, I would get them to come and, and do a, a whole day of training. And you basically on that, what you want to do is, you don't want to train a whole bunch of guys.
No, yeah.
You want to train at least two, that way you have the guy that's going to be the operator and a backup for him, in case he has to have sick days or family days or whatever, but they're usually pretty good, you know, the companies that, Mr. Lynn, I dealt with them too. Kenlock was one, uh, San Antonio and Houston, and they were pretty good about training. It all depends on how much training you want. They will do a continuing training program for you guys.
Good to know.
Yeah, we're going to keep the other one, correct?
Yes, ma'am, we are, we're going to, we're going to relegate it to the sports complex, and then in the event we get a convention center, we'll do the convention center parking lot as well.
Any further discussion on item number eight on the agenda? If, but I want to entertain a motion at this point?
Go ahead, make a motion that we, uh, take action to amend ordinance 2107, amending the adopted budget of the city of Kennedy, Texas, for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022, for the purpose of funding line items relating to the daily operations of the municipality.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll?
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Council, would you like to amend your motion to the fiscal year October 2020 through September 21?
Oh, yes.
21, yeah.
I need you to make that on the record, please.
Can you restate the motion, please?
Okay.
With the corrected dates?
Number of the dates?
21.
Just, October 20, and then September 21.
October 20, September 21. Go ahead and make a motion that we, uh, amend the ordinance 2107, and the adopted budget of the city of Kennedy, Texas, for the fiscal year beginning October 20, 20, 2021, and ending September 21.
No, 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 no. October 1st, 20...
October 1st.
2020.
2020.
And then September 2021, there you go.
For the purpose of funding line items relating to the daily operations of the municipality.
We have a second?
I'll second.
With a motion and a second?
Matt call the roll.
Now, Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll?
Yes, sir. Council Brianis?
Yes.
Council Wen?
Yes.
Council Sines?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion carries. Agenda item number nine, consideration of possible action in regards to authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase one 800-kilowatt generator and 1,600-amp stainless steel automatic transfer switch to be placed at the reverse osmosis water treatment plant. One 125-kilowatt generator and 400-amp NEMA 3R painted steel automatic transfer switch to be placed at well number 14. One 200-kilowatt generator and 400-amp NEMA 3R painted steel automatic transfer switch to be placed at well number 15. One 200-kilowatt generator and 400-amp NEMA 3R painted steel automatic transfer switch to be placed at well number 16, and all labor, ancillary parts, and contingencies necessary for installation at a cost not to exceed $850,000. Have a motion to discuss this item?
I'll make a motion to discuss item number nine.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to discuss. Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll?
Council seconded it.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Council Brianis?
Yes.
Council Wen?
Yes.
Council Sines?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
All in favor? Um, any discussion or questions for Mr. Lynn on this agenda item?
Mr. Lynn, uh, I see here that we have, I know we have seven wells, but we're only doing three. And the, and the RO, I know the RO is going, it's going to be a huge generator and a transfer switch, but, so what we're going to be doing is just being, if we have another catastrophe like we have with the trees, so we're just going to be able to operate, basically, not with the other wells, we're not going to do the other wells also.
That is correct. These are the, these are the three most high-d幾個 wells that we have. So, and when we asked Mercer to come out and take a look at everything for us, he's the three wells he has been in by the way. So, and then, of course, with the other two wells a little north of here.
Yeah.
So, yes, sir. That's your question.
And this, this, this generator, this generator that we're putting at the RO, the 800,000-kilowatt, this generator is going to be able to handle the, the entire RO or just portions of the RO?
No, sir, it's real, handle the entire RO.
Okay, that's very important.
Yes, sir.
So we're doing three wells, 14, 15, and 16?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
As well as the RO.
Yeah.
That's good.
And, uh, just, just to make sure, I just want to clear up for transparency purposes, the reason the dollar amount's 850,000, if you look through the stuff, you'll see that Mercer came in at just under 700,000 for the cost of the wells, but as I have done in the past, I've added a 20% buffer onto that, just in case for unforeseen things that may come up. I wanted to make sure that the council approved them not to exceed a amount tonight, uh, that way we could work up to that, that way we wouldn't have to come back and review this again. So I really anticipate it will come at us.
So when Mercer, and say, we pass this tonight, and when we get started on this project, when, when they do the changeover, which is we're going to have some downtime on the plattets itself, are they going to bring in our, is our capacity there at the well? Because we have a mini gallon storage tank of, uh, treated water that we sell to the public, will be able to handle the transfer over, uh, in a reasonable time where the citizens won't be inconvenienced? Because that's going to be a mighty big time.
I would have to just make sure I confirmed that with Mercer and with Mr. Higgins, but just from my, from what I know from what Mercer has said, the answer to your question would be yes. But I will definitely drill down on that, just to get a hard yes off of that.
Okay. Good question. What are these optional items back here? I mean, I know what they say, but, um...
Let me turn it back to her.
Make for upgrading on that transfer switches? Is that something we're going to do, could do?
No, the 668,000 he has in there, that's to do all that stuff. If we wanted to do anything else, Mercer just went ahead and said, well, you could go this right one costs you an extra $300,000, or you could go this right one costs you an extra $12,000, if the council wanted to do so. Um, again, with the 850,000 not to exceed, it'd be real easy to do the $12,000 ones if we wanted to do that. Um, of course, the 300,000, not so much.
And one thing we do want to keep in mind is that this is something that we're doing that, once we're online with the new wells, all this will be just sitting.
Just like sitting?
Sitting, yeah, because right now, we don't have a end purpose for the RO plant or the, um, the wells that we are operating, once we bring on the Carizo wells.
Yeah, because that's a, that's a, uh, TCEQ call.
Right, right.
Whenever, whenever you're blending different waters, TCEQ is going to, they have to get involved, they have to approve it. And in the past, was the, that was the reason that we had to go to the RO, because the water that we were drinking here in town was not, not acceptable for the state.
Right.
So that's why we had to drill those other wells out of 743.
I understand, but that was...
And they said that, because the Carizo is a different aquifer from the aquifers that we have out here on 743.
Right.
So, and I understand your point, that we're going to have those generators there, but it, it's, it's two things. We've had two, two catastrophes, which was Hurricane Harvey in 2017, and now the freeze, and both times councils have said that, you know, we need to do something because something's going on with the environment.
Right.
So that's why...
No, I'm in, I'm in total agreement that we need to do it, but I just don't think we need to do the over and above stuff.
The optional.
The optional stuff is what I was talking about.
And I can understand Councilwoman Sines' concern, but in, in any type of construction, like you know, that if there are unforeseen things that happen, change order comes into, into play, with the city manager, of, of course, advising the council and the mayor that I have to do this change order because this unforeseen...
Right.
Problem came up.
But there wouldn't be any change orders if you put the buffer in there already?
No, right, no, there's not going to be a change order.
But that's what change orders are for, in case, you know, in case something, but there's, there's transparency.
Correct.
He's made aware of it, then he makes council aware of it and the mayor, that, you know, for approval.
If I, if I may address Councilor Wen's statement, actually, yes, there is an end game with the RO.
Okay.
Okay, well, if you consider the dynamic of the city of Kennedy, okay, or let's even stop there, let's just take a look at Texas as a whole. 27 million people, water for 25 million, population's supposed to be around 55 million in the next 20 years, okay? There's no water. Right now, we're sitting pretty. We've got three wells that are running, we're fixing to have two more wells that are running, and we've got an option on a third well that's going to be running, okay? The end game for the RO is this, the RO plant is permitted by TCEQ. If we shut down the RO plant, and then we decide five, 10 years from now, oh, wait, let's reactivate these wells, we've got to go through a whole new permitting process to get a new RO plant, okay? However, we keep our RO plant running, we stay under the current permit, what we're going to do with the RO plant is a very simple diversion. We're going to take all the water that comes out of the wells of the RO plant, we're going to funnel it straight to the prison. The prison alone, with the revenue we generate off the prison, will give us a positive cash flow after all expenses at the RO plant. We're going to take all the water coming from Pope and bring it in and funnel it into our new one to one and a half million gallon elevated storage tank with the residents tank into the residence of Kennedy. That's the plan then.
Separated.
Okay?
That's good.
And that's where I was going before Mr. Lynn makes his comment there. Even though we go into the Corizo, we still have a bargaining table chip with the state. We could even tell the state, bargain with them, "Look," because the state has licensed operators that run their, their system out there, and their water and their sewer. See, they could, they could possibly, we could either sell them the water, which we would have to provide the operators, or sell them, sell them that plant. But of course, they would take over the permit. I mean, they would have to apply, even though the state. So there's two options there, really.
Good, good. That's good to know.
Just to let you know, it wasn't...
I appreciate it.
Any further questions for Mr. Lynn on this item for the council? I have one, Mr. Lynn.
Yes, sir.
The only bid, or proposal that we have before is, is the one submitted by Mercer Controls.
Yes, sir.
Have we advertised for bids for this? Do we need...
We haven't advertised for bids because we haven't gone out to do any work. I just wanted to get a, a number. If you remember from the prior conversations that we've had in council meetings, I was trying to get something to bring to you guys as a hard number that we could, we could move off of. And with the news of getting the money out from the government, the $700,000, it only makes sense for us to go ahead and just approve this. When we get ready to start doing the actual construction and everything, we'll go through the bidding process there and that. But it will most likely be the same machines that Mercer, Mercer gave me a quote on.
Yeah, but right now, we're not approving Mercer. We're just approving the fund.
You're just approving me to move forward with doing this and not to exceed a rate of...
Okay, okay.
Mercer's always been the company that the city in the past has used with the, especially with the electronics at the RO. And I mean, I'm pretty sure everybody here has gone up to the RO and seen what kind of plant it is. It's a big plant. Lot of electrical parts, lot of...
Lot of moving pieces.
Yep. So they're the ones that are most familiar with the plant. That's, that's why Mr. Lynn, you know, always in contact with.
So it would make sense to...
Yes.
They have the most history with the plant.
And just one more question. The, the new well sites near Pope, is there a plan for backup power for those wells?
Yes, yeah. They should have generators built into everything as well. So we actually, that $49 million will come with all of that. We'll start putting all that stuff. Instantly have backup generators out there as well.
Of course, you're going to, once, mayor, once we get on that, that we have that operating, you're going to see the city of Kennedy trucks going out there daily because they're going to have to go check the wells.
Right.
Yep.
Because there are wells.
That's right. It's going to be a little bit of a trip.
Mm-hmm. Then you've got to take readings, everything, for TCEQ.
Any other questions for Mr. Lynn in regard to this agenda item or discussion on this item?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. If there's no further questions or discussion on this item, I would entertain a motion at this point.
I'm going to make a motion that we take action in regard to authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase one 800-kilowatt generator, 1,600-amp stainless steel automatic transfer switch to be placed at the reverse osmosis water treatment plant, 125-kilowatt generator, 400 amps, NEMA 3R painted steel automatic transfer switch to be placed at well number 14, one 200-kilowatt generator and 400 amps, NEMA 3R painted steel automatic transfer switch to be placed at well number 15, and one 200-kilowatt generator and 400 amp, NEMA 3R painted steel automatic transfer switch to be placed at well number 16, and all labor affiliated parts consequently necessary for installation and cost not to exceed $850,000.
We have a motion and a second from Councilor Douglas. Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll?
Councilor Brianas?
Yes.
Councilor Lynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number 10, closed session. City council will meet in closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, under section 551.074, Personnel Matters, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, item A, City Secretary. Do we have a motion to discuss item number 10?
I'll make a motion that we go in a closed session.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session at this time. Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll?
Councilor Brianas?
Yes.
Councilor Lynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
All voted in favor. Motion carry, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen who are here in the audience, we are going to go to the daughery room now for a closed session. You're welcome to remain here. Or you're wel, the da, daughery room?
Daughery room.
Daughery room? Am I pronouncing that right? And so you're welcome to remain here and wait until we reconvene into an open session, or you're welcome to leave at this time. So it's your, your option. It's 8:30 PM. We are reconvening into open session. City council will reconvene into open session, at which time action on the matter discussed in closed session may be considered. Item A, City Secretary, action to be taken regarding items discussed in executive session. Okay, you have a motion to discuss this item?
Make a motion to discuss item 11 on the agenda.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll?
Councilor Brianas?
Yes.
Councilor Lynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
Okay, any discussion on this item this time? Just for the, the public's information, we interviewed one candidate for this position and while we were in closed session. And now is the opportunity for the city council to take action in regard to this important hiring decision. So if there's no further discussion or questions in regard to this, I would entertain a motion.
I'm going to make a motion that we offer the candidate the position of City Secretary at a salary of $67,000.
Ms. Cad, do we need to state the candidate's name at this time?
Uh, yes.
Ruby...
Miss Bevan?
Bevan.
Bevins, excuse me, Bevins.
Ruby Bevins.
Do you want to restate the whole motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we make the offer for City Secretary to Ruby Bevins at $67,000 for the city of Kennedy.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll?
Councilor Brianas?
Yes.
Councilor Lynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Douglas?
Yes.
All in favor?
All voted in favor. Motion carries. Welcome, Ms. Bevins. It's good to have you on board. Item number 12, items to consider for placement on future agendas. Does anyone have any items that they wish to be placed? If not, we'll take them.
For that May meeting, just updates or whatever needs to be updated, if there's any...
Mr. Almond's update?
Yes.
Yeah, he's going to get those whenever he gets there and...
Okay. I'm going to say, just a reminder, not because he brought, he brought, he brought that up, so...
Regarding the fire department audit?
Yes.
Right. And this part of it, I'll make sure we have that ready for...
And any, any other updates that are out there that may be updated, make sure they're on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
For the next council meeting, I want to discuss what we're going to do with the funds that we have in budget for that my office. Didn't we, isn't it on the budget, on the books that we have some money allotted for that?
Yes, sir. There is, and we have an excellent idea for that.
Can you put that on the agenda to discuss?
Yes, sir, we will. And just a reminder, Tuesday night, we'll be right back here again for the workshop for the fire department agreement.
Agreement.
Any other items to consider for placement on future agendas?
Can you put an agenda item to set a date for a workshop for that, I don't remember that, that, that ordinance?
Procedures, procedures for placement of items on an agenda.
We can actually do that since we're this close to the election, because we can figure out the new council, which is what we're waiting for to write down. Yes, sir. We'll put that on there.
It's a set of workshop date, right?
Yes, sir. Set of workshop date.
Any other items to consider?
Want to clarify a question on this, not to have my office, but what we're going to do with the funds.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we have a good idea for what to do with the funds.
Right there.
I would be produced with the chamber.
Any other items for future agendas? If not...
Is there any way you could put code compliance or whoever's up there to just advise the city of any future projects that might be upcoming or anything new that's coming to
I'll, I'll, you know what? I'll get Jaime in his, I'll have Jaime do his, I'll have Jaime do the code compliance report and have him put that in the code compliance report.
Sounds good.
Okay, it's very good.
Any other items for future agendas? Item number 13, announcements of community interest and/or upcoming events. Does anyone have any announcements?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just would like to remind the council and anyone listening on Facebook Live that April 30th, I need those forms back for the surveys, for the strategic plan. I'm looking at doing the grassroots sometime in May, after maybe 11. So, I'll, I'll let you all know on maybe 11 for their bus exactly.
And the link to the survey is still on the city's homepage, correct? On the website?
Yes, it is.
Any other announcements? No further announcements, we'll move on to item number 14, and that is to adjourn. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.